Let's call the meeting to order at 5:32. Thank you all for coming to Mendon's Select Board Meeting.
This is my meeting.
Remember, please, to mute yourselves if you are not speaking at the time. I will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, we will add or delete items to the agenda. This is a short agenda, so we're adding this evening. I have three things to add, and we'll start as letter C under Business. Some administrative matters. The check warrant and the amount of $22,691.33. And payroll for $17,895.17. That will be letter C. Letter D, we have appointees for the Planning Commission that we will we will do as letter D. And letter E, we have an appointment of Larry Corcel for the Otter Creek Communication Union District. Did I miss anything, Megan?
Nope, I think that's it.
Okay. Under announcements, our next Select Board meeting will be held on April 1st. There will not be a meeting on April 8th. We are advertising for an assistant bookkeeper, an assistant clerk, and a highway maintenance equipment operator. Any further announcements?
Nope.
Nope.
We have public comment. There are several people here. We have a 15-minute time slot. If need be, we can add to that two minutes per person, and I will use my timer this evening. Is there anybody that has a comment? Jessica, go ahead. You're make sure to unmute. There you go.
I'll be real quick. I'm Jessica Cannell. I'm here on behalf of the Barstow Board. As some of you may know, the budget was defeated by four votes this last election. There were some additional cuts made at the RNSU level, and we will be having a revote. The revote will happen on April 30th. And then we will have another informational meeting on April 22nd. For any questions, take questions now, you know, in advance, obviously. But we will have another informational meeting on the 22nd.
Thank you, Jessica. Again, if you are not speaking, please make sure you are muted until you are called on. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, under Business, letter A. We have called this meeting to appoint our town clerk and treasurer. And we are going to appoint Jessie Bridge. And this will take effect later this month on the 28th of March. Congratulations, Jessie. Saw your name. Hi, Seth.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Moving on to letter B, the Town Office Safety Improvements. Sorry?
Val, you should make a motion and you should make a motion and pass that.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion of the appointment of Jessie Bridge for the position of town clerk and, I'm sorry, what is the full title?
Treasurer, yep, town clerk and treasurer.
Town clerk and treasurer.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are my cheeks pink? I'm embarrassed I didn't do that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, letter B, the Town Office Safety Improvements. Steve, would you like to take over here?
Yes, thank you, everybody. I'll try to keep this brief. Basically, I would like to just start with an initial timeline for the requests for proposals, RFPs. The original RFPs were sent out on March 13th, 2024, to Brian Gates, John Bates, and David Dutton. There were actually three people who we sent requests out to. The request was accompanied by a conceptual drawing performed by Robert Carwley and its architects. And I developed a minimum outline specification, meaning that the bid would have to include all of the items that I listed as a minimum. And then we're relying on the contractor's expertise as a design-build project to ensure that the project comes to fruition as expected. And the responsibility would ultimately be mine to make sure that that, in fact, happens. I sent out a follow-up bid date due reminder on March 15th, 2024, indicating that bids were due no later than March 18th, 2024. John Bates, one of the bidders from At Your Service Vermont, kindly responded, indicating he would not be bidding on the project on 3/15/2024. On Wednesday, March 20th, 3/20/24, Brian Gates texted me indicating that he was still interested in bidding the project but felt he wasn't given enough time. Therefore, on Thursday, March 21st, per Brian's request, I extended the due date to all bidders to earlier today, 3/25 at 2:00 p.m. And additionally, it included two minor modifications to the outlined spec. So essentially, as of right now, I have received only one completed quotation, including a cover letter outlining, it came from Dutton Construction, Dave Dutton. It included a cover letter outlining his, what his approach to the job would be, his job experience, the certificate of insurance, and as per my request, two detailed line item quotes, one with window privacy film for the six front office windows and one without, as it was surprisingly expensive. And both quotes did not include any of the additional vestibule heat, any additional vestibule heating. The general consensus being that where the new wall is going to be located, there now will be some existing radiant heat in that area. And that, if proven necessary, additional electric heat could be added to that area very easily, retrofitted really with no premium to the cost. There was no economy of scale of doing it now. So we kind of felt that was an item that could be done on an as-needed basis. So to get right to it, David's quote for his first estimate, essentially including every line item in my minimum bid outline, excluding the privacy film, came in at $29,951.72. To add the privacy film on the six windows was a $2,689 adder, which brought his quote to $32,641. I can review the outlined spec if anybody's interested and answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Go ahead, Fred.
Steve, Fred Bagley, the window coverings, would those be the sort of thing that Awesome Graphics routinely installs on businesses? Or was there some other sub that he was using other than Awesome Graphics?
I think he actually reached out to Royal Glass. I'm not entirely sure. I didn't get a complete list of subcontractors that he was using. But in Dave's cover letter, he indicated that prior to job commencement, that list would, in fact, be provided.
And he was proposing a window film, not new glass that opaque in some way?
Correct, correct. It was specifically designed to, they call it a window privacy film. It allows some natural light to come in, but it's very difficult to see through, especially. It's kind of a, I don't want to represent that it's a one-way glass-type film, but it's similar. Fred, we were kind of thinking that, you know, there's, this was, we were kind of looking at this as Phase 1 to this project, Phase 2 being a complete exterior camera system and, you know, video monitoring, not unlike what the Chittenden Town Offices have. I actually went and looked at their system. It's quite nice. And we were thinking that the film application process could happen during Phase 2. Included in Phase 1, however, is, as part of the outlined spec, is a single camera in the vestibule that will record anytime anybody enters into the vestibule and has the ability to integrate easily into future, the future exterior camera systems.
Steve, is that audio as well in the vestibule?
I believe it is, Val. I may have to, I may have to get back to you on that. Confirm. But I think the request was with audio. In fact, I'm sure it was. Yes. We actually have, we reached out to three different companies. I shouldn't say we. Dave, Dave reached out to three different companies, including Royal Glass, Countryside Lock and Alarm, and First Line Security. He wasn't able to get good, hard numbers at this point. So that is still a bit of a gray area. But we do have a lot, we do have a placeholder for, at a minimum, for the, for the vestibule camera with a 4TB hard drive and the ability to record audio.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Carol has their hand raised.
Go ahead, Carol.
Hi, everyone. I just, you know all how I, everyone knows how me and my husband feel about this. We feel that since there were no credible threats ever, were no credible threats ever reported to the authorities, there is no reason to spend this money on this retrofit of the town hall. So that's where we stand. I mean, you're going to spend our money however you want to spend our money. So go right ahead and do it. But just know that's how a few people feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah, Hannah Abrams. Go ahead.
My quick question, can, to save some money, can we put like a do-it-yourself film over the windows?
I could certainly run that by the contractor, Hannah.
Sure. It's something I've done in my own home and offices. And I don't know if it would be a big savings, but since we're talking specifically about privacy, I thought that might be an option. Thank you.
I do want to clarify that this project, the money that we use for this project is, will be using ARPA funds.
Right.
This is not taxpayer money.
Excuse me, Val, I think Jim Reddy's trying to raise his hand literally instead of on the screen.
Sorry, James.
Thank you. My comment is, I've been unemployed for 16 years now. And before I became unemployed, I spent a lot of time going to places like in New York and Chicago and Boston, bankers and lawyers and stuff. And for the last, the seven years, the last several years before I retired, you could hardly get into a building in a city in America without going through a security system, including metal detectors and the whole thing. I think we're behind the times. You don't need a certain credible threat to a specific building or a specific town. Even the post office downtown, before they moved to the other thing, you could go into the post office, okay, but you want to go into the rest of the building, you went through security. I think that's the world we live in. You don't need a specific threat, the rest of the world or the rest of the country, major buildings, any office building is doing it. I think it's perfectly normal. It's, unfortunately, it isn't our history, but it's become our history. And I think we need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great explanation.
Anyone else?
You just said pretty much what I was going to say, Val. Just wanted to remind everybody, this is just an upgrade to, it's no specific threat. And we did it, so.
You raised hands? Cora?
Hey, everybody. Yeah, I think this is, I think as Jim and Seth both said, I mean, unfortunately, in today's day, society, this is common with all my clients are upping their security in their businesses. It's very common, unfortunately, becoming more and more necessary. Given how you're paying for it with the TARPa funds, I think I saw something on social media today. Between that and the building improvement funds, I don't think it will have any impact on our tax rate at this point in time based on the money that's been set aside in the past and the money you're going to be using from TARPa. So I think it's a great investment for the security of our employees in town.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, just on what the other gentleman stated, I believe that that's why people are moving out of the cities for those reasons and the security reasons and the crime. So if you make our town look like it does in their city, well, then just assume that people aren't going to want to move to our town. Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of serving as the interim zoning administrator for four months last year until Steve stepped forward. So I spent a lot of time in the town office and watched how the office staff worked, whether they had to engage deliberately with the public who came to the counter or whether people were dropping in to ask for information. But I was struck with how often people come in and just want to talk. They want to come in and discuss things that are not pertinent to the town per se. They want to talk about their personal problems, their neighbors or whatever. And it struck me that our, our office staff spend a lot of their time reacting to non-business situations. And I, I think, in a way, you know, it's regrettable that these are the times. But I think it's going to make our office more efficient in the use of our employees' time by having these changes.
Thank you. I can't see the names whose hands. I believe you've both spoken. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to approve the use of ARPA funds, $30,000 to improve the office safety.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to appointees for the Planning Commission. I will make a, a motion to appoint Terry Corsones, Dennis O'Connell, Sarah Buxton, and Justin Lindholm to the Planning Commission.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And letter E. One more appointment of Larry Corcel to the Otter Creek Communication Union District. Make a motion for that appointment.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have I missed anything? I appreciate everyone that came this evening. We love, we love the sense of community here. And you're welcome to come to any meeting.
Please.
I don't know if this is appropriate timing. I had a question about the motel that was spoken of, the motel on Route 4 that is owned by the same owner who owns the Cortina. If there was an update on the status of that?
Steve, would you like to take that?
Steve, you got, you all that? Oh, there it is.
Is there anything that we could share at this time? We can't hear you.
Number one, I can assure you. You can't hear me?
I can now.
How about now?
Yes.
You can? Okay, okay, okay. I'm having a little network difficulties. I'll be brief. Last week, excuse me, last week, Fred Bagley and myself, Fred as a representative of the Planning Commission, me as the zoning administrator, along with the state representatives from Department of Fire Safety, including the electrical and plumbing inspector and the, I'm sorry, plumbing inspector actually was not there, the electrical inspector and the, one of the fire marshals was there. And they developed a pretty lengthy list of items that needed to be completed for state compliance before a certificate of occupancy would be issued at the state level. Item number 17, the last item, thank goodness, was the, was that the state is requiring the owners to meet all of Mendon's zoning regulations and any other, and any other conditions that we, as a town, are, feel necessary for the, for the proper safety and address the concerns of, you know, of all the residents. That being said, I sent the owners an email informing them that, in fact, if they are going to participate in the voucher program, that would constitute a change of, minimally, a change of use, which would require a warned hearing through the Planning Commission and, in fact, may actually require a ZBA hearing. If they, there could be a conditional use change to multifamily, which would require ZBA approval. So there's, you know, minimally, there's going to be at least one board review, possibly two. And then, interestingly, in a reciprocal agreement that we have with the state, if, in fact, Mendon grants a change of use for that property, that will trigger a change of use at the state level, which is going to reclassify that building, which will require the owners of that building to actually install a wet fire protection system, a full sprinkler system, estimated cost of around $250,000. So I feel confident in saying that there, there is going to be quite a bit of scrutiny before those folks are going to be able to move ahead with a CO conditional or otherwise, either at state or town level.
Is there any information on what their intention was for the property?
They are representing that they want to operate it as a hotel. I received a letter from their attorney saying that they're going to operate it as a hotel. However, the owner, one of the two owners, they're brothers, indicated that they planned on participating in the voucher system or with the voucher system, which, given their track record as owners of a similar type of facility and given the nature of what the voucher system is intended to do, would, in fact, trigger a change of use at the town level. Can I answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Fred, did you have something to say? I can't tell if your hand has been up.
I can always supplement what Steve has so well articulated. From the Planning Commission perspective, we welcome upgrades to that building. It's been unoccupied for a decade. It's in terrible shape. It's a health and safety threat as it is, so we welcome the upgrades. And I think all the safeguards that Steve has mentioned, it'll work ultimately well for the town.
Megan, we had, were there any other questions on this matter? I have to jump back and ask a question regarding the Planning Commission. Are there, are there any other comments? Okay. Megan, Dick, or Richard Howe raised his hand and asked about the Planning Commission appointments. Did I, did I miss?
Those were the four that Terry sent me today. Those were the four that Terry sent me today.
Okay. Can I look into this tomorrow? Dick, and get back to you. I will do that. Okay, with no further comments or questions, I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:02. Thank you all.